I would like to call the Prince William County School Board meeting to order. A motion is in order for the approval of the closed session agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is five yes, three absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to the motion to enter closed session. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711, that the school board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss, consider assignment, appointment, performance, disciplining, and resignation of specific employees. Appointees or officers of the school board under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1 and 8. Two, to consult legal counsel regarding specific legal and actual probable litigation under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A7 and 8. And three, to discuss the review of superintendent's performance goals for the 1920 school year under Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A1.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
I second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is five yes, unanimous. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will now enter closed session and return to open session in approximately, approximately one hour. Will now be returning to open session from closed session. We have a closed session action item that we will be voting on. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the superintendent's mutually agreed upon performance goals as presented in our closed session.
Do you have a second? Ms. Jessie.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is six yes, Willie Deutsch, one absent, Ralston. Motion passed.
Moving on to the approval of the closed session. That's 8.01. A motion's in order. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
I second.
Ms. Williams seconds. Any discussion? Please vote. Were they shocked too? Yes.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Excellent, outstanding. Move on to closed session certification. A motion's in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wilk.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3712, the closed session of our school board meeting of October 2nd, 2019, be certified by adopting the following resolution, now therefore be resolved that the school board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the board.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Jessie.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Great. All right. It is time for our presentation, Positively Prince William County Schools, or PWCS. And I am very proud of the continued efforts we are making in our schools to ensure we are inclusive of all students. Tonight's Positively PWCS Highlights and Award Winning Program, Striving to Include All Students. Superintendent Dr. Walts, will you introduce our presentation?
Thank you Chairman Latif and members of the board. I am very proud to have the fantastic coordinator for the Forest Park High School Unified Sports Program here tonight to share information on two awards that they recently earned. Principal Richard Martinez will kick off the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Walts, Chairman Latif, Mr. Wilk, members of the school board. It's a pleasure to be here tonight with members of our staff as well as students' representatives from our Unified Sports Program. This is my sixth year at Forest Park High School. And when I arrived there, I wanted to work on bringing the opportunity for some of our students to be able to take electives that they typically wouldn't have the opportunity. Among them was music history, art history, which benefits with the Polar Express program that we do, with Breakfast with Santa that we do. You see them participate. And then the challenge was the physical education component. And I approached Ms. McCann, and Ms. McCann says, "I'm willing to try it." And this has just blossomed and flourished to the recognitions that we've done. And it's not just at Forest Park. She's teamed with other schools to make this happen. And our goal is to keep it moving forward, be it basketball games, track meets, whatever we can to afford the opportunities for these students to socialize. And we also have a great group of parents that show up and support, and the student body that's supportive of this, something that began with her with maybe just 20 students participating. She now has like close to 100 students who want to come out and support the program. When I say 100, we're talking about general education students who want to come and help students that have some difficulties so that they can have the same privileges that they have. So without further ado, I want to present to Ms. McCann, who will speak more about the program.
Thank you all. Unified Sports, this year, Forest Park was, had the opportunity to apply for a national-recognized program through Special Olympics. And by chance, out of 6,500 unified programs throughout the country, only 34 schools in the entire country were awarded this honor, and only one in the state of Virginia, and that was Forest Park High School. Unified Sports started four years ago. Jim Garrett came and presented it, and Holly Touche, me, and Julie O'Neil at Patriot High School all agreed to start the program. The administration from our schools was on board immediately. What is Unified Sports, you may ask? It is the dedication to promoting social inclusion through shared sports training and competitive experiences. Unified Sports joins people with and without intellectual disabilities on the same team. Simply put, training together, playing together, is a quick path to friendship and understanding. What does this program look like at our school? We run a basketball program where kids are, there's five students on the court at all times. Sometimes we have some extra to make sure the games flow effectively. There is one of our team sports photos with Brentsville. We played one year. We also have a huge end-of-season tournament, another game with Potomac, and our end-of-season stuff. My co-coach, Ashley Tayon, who, without her, many things would not happen. And this is our big end-of-season picture. There was over 10 schools that played. We play at least three to four games in the day. It is on a Saturday. Justin has been at some of our basketball events, as well as some of our track and field events. One of the big highlights for me from basketball is absolutely watching a student who might never have had the opportunity to play sports, take a basket, make a basket, make the point, and look over at you and smile. Or watching a student who might not be able to walk or need assistance with a gate trainer and being able to participate. Our track and field event hosts over 10 schools again this year. We had over 260 kids at our track competing in events such as shot put, standing long jump, softball throw, running events, relay team. And again, this is all inclusive. There are students with disabilities and students without disabilities. The smiles are endless, the cheers are, the cheers are very loud, as you just heard, and the races are intense. Next year, we hope to add a timing system and accept the invitation to compete at Penn Relays. We found out late this year, that's why we didn't go. But track and field also has the ability to compete at the state level. Unified Sports needs a coach that's willing to coach, coordinate, as well as be dedicated to making sure we get from where we go. So I got my CDL this year to make sure Unified continues. This endeavor would not happen without the support of administration, school board members, Dr. Walts attending our big track and field meet this year, Emily Utter and Beth Tomniak, and Ally and Val from Special Olympics encouraging me to promote our program and to apply for this grant, apply for this recognition. All the teachers and staff at my school, my special education teachers, especially my A Street Bruins. But mostly, it's the students. The quotes I hear, "I love Unified. I'm getting so much out of this. This is my favorite club to be part of." And a senior on his graduation day told me, "This was going to be the memory he took with him onto college." For me, the endeavor is truly an undertaking, but with this support, it is a huge success. Presently in Prince William County, we have 11 high schools. If each of those high schools has 100 students involved, that's 1,100 students participating, and approximately 440 students that have the opportunity to participate in high school sports that might not have before. How will we keep this growing? HPE teachers are writing curriculum to have a Unified PE class. Building the programs at the middle school and elementary level, Parkside Middle School already had an event. Continuing exposure, continuing support. Check out, see if your high schools are having any events. Email me. I'll send you our schedule. Maybe adding a line in the county budget to provide coaches or Unified coordinators a little extra money. It is a VHSL-recognized sport. Remember, this program happens because teachers want it to and administrators support it. Unified has a power to transform lives. I have seen this happen. It will continue to happen. Grateful to be part of Unified Sports, proud of my Bruins. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Wilk.
First of all, thank you, Ms. McCann. Thank you, Principal Martinez. This is a very special program, and thank you, Dr. Walts, for having the Unified group in today. As Ms. McCann mentioned, this is something before I was on the school board, given that my spouse, Lori, works at Forest Park for the last 15 years. This is a very special program that I was a part of even before. Being the father of a special needs child, which was diagnosed with autism, in the middle of my first race for the school board four years ago, I realized even more importantly how special this event is, knowing that particularly if my sons do attend Forest Park, if my wife is still there, which I believe she will be there. This is a special program and something we see all across the county with all the high schools. It is an absolute honor to be at the basketball games, to be at the track events. I'll be there on Friday when the banner is presented. This is an outstanding program, and I want to thank the entire team, Principal Martinez for the leadership, Ms. McCann, the entire team, the Special Education Department, the general education teachers, everyone who's a part of this, and then, of course, the students as well. It's so great to see the inclusion and have, as we just heard the general ed students talk about, how this is such an important event to them. When I went out to the, one of the first events when I came on the board, it was hosted at Patriot High School, and I drove across the county to go to this event, and I really saw it, and it hit me when one of my former students, who now attends VCU, was there helping with the Patriot team, and he said, "This is such a special event, and this is something I'll always remember." And again, I want to thank Forest Park and the Bruins for bringing this and expanding it throughout our school system. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that inspiring effort and your leadership over there. Thank you so much for all of you from Forest Park. Okay. Next, we will, I guess, do my strike the gavel. I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. At the request of the Coles District School Board Member Willie Deutsch, we will have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a student who'd like to lead us in the pledge? If not, okay. I'll just go ahead and kick it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we will move to the approval of the agenda, the public meeting agenda. A motion's in order. Mr. Trenum.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Any discussion? Great. Please vote.
The vote is six yes, one not present at vote, one absent. Motion passed.
Moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order. Mr. Trenum.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the consent agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Williams.
I'd like to second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
The vote is six yes, one absent, one not present at vote. Motion passed.
Okay, great. Moving on to the citizen comments on the agenda and non-agenda items. It looks like we have seven folks who signed up in advance and six who signed up at the door. We will go through all of them. You will have three minutes to speak, and the clerk will keep the time. The lights on the monitor will indicate your progress. A yellow light will signify that you should sum up your position. Red indicates your time is up and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record when you do approach the podium. Our first speakers, and you can come to sit in the front, I'll call the first seven up, John Snadell, Alice Crowe, Tiziana Botino, Jennifer Gilli, Nicole Eichoff, Kelly Martin, and Kate Olson Flynn. And we'll go with John, John Snadell.
Did you say I was first?
John?
Yeah.
Yep, you, sir.
Okay. Okay, well, my, I'm John Snadell, and my address is on file. Okay. Let's see. I remember my first year of teaching, I had to go to another teacher's room for some reason. I can't remember why, delivering a message or something. All I know is I walked into the room and I was, the students were already in their seats and sitting, doing their work. So I went up and went to the front of the room and stood nearby, waiting for the teacher to finish talking to a student that she was talking to. While I was standing there, I noticed that there was something behind her on the wall, and I remember what I saw to this day. It was a little cartoon that she had cut out of the newspaper. In the first frame, the teacher is sitting at her desk, working. In the second frame, she, one of her little students came up to her desk. It was a little guy, couldn't really see over the desk even, really, and he was in a snowsuit with a hood up so that you couldn't see much of anything at all, and even had little mittens sticking out. And in the next frame, the kid says, "Mrs. Smith, why is today's date circled on your calendar?" In the next frame, she says, "Well, that's because today is payday." And in the next frame, the kid just stands there. And then in the last frame, he says, "You have a job." Sometimes, you know, sometimes teachers run into things like that, and I know I have once or twice myself. You can understand why a kid would be surprised to realize that the kids in the teachers, try that again, that, and the kids and the teachers go to school and they, they realize that they get paid, but the kids don't. Meanwhile, it might be a little hard for the younger ones to grasp hold of this, and, you know, it's, they just don't get it. So what scares me is, though, is that, is that there are times when a principal behaves in a manner, in a similar manner. It seems lost on them that a principal would refuse to accept the fact that teachers work to earn a living. So I leave it to you to ponder. Think about the possibility that the professional on your, the professional that your principal is dealing with needs a job too. They rely on it. And remember too, that what's good for teachers is good for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice Crowe.
Good evening to the Prince William County School Board. It's a pleasure to be here, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak. You have one of the most important jobs imaginable, the education of over 90,000 students attending Prince William County schools. And I thank you for your dedication to that goal. But we can't limit education to academics and ignore the fact that our very existence is threatened by climate change. Climate change intersects with every issue, for without a livable planet, does anything else matter? According to the report issued in 2018 by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, we have a mere 11 years before it's too late to reduce greenhouse gases and prevent irreversible effects. However, climate change is accelerating and is causing irreversible damage now. Our reliance on fossil fuels has brought us the hottest summer ever all over the globe, flooding, glacial melting, sea level rise, drought, fires, famine, deadly hurricanes, extinction of wildlife, and climate refugees suffering and dying. Wars have ensued as crops diminish and resources such as water become scarce. Our children understand this, and they have taken extraordinary measures to bring global attention to this crisis. Over 4 million students from 160 countries participated in the 2019 Global Climate Strike, calling for action before it is too late. As Greta Thunberg said before the UN Climate Change Summit, "This is all wrong. I shouldn't be up here. I should be back in school on the other side of the ocean. You have stolen my dreams and my childhood. How dare you?" And you know what? She's right. We created this mess, and it is our job to clean it up. And that's why I'm here tonight. My name is Alice Crowe, and I am a member of the Mothers Out Front Fossil Free Schools Campaign. Mothers Out Front is a national-
Thank you, Alice.
I'm sorry?
Your time. You're over.
May I just get to the ask?
No.
Thank you.
Sorry. Tiziana Botino.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tiziana. I'm the founder of the Greater Prince William Climate Action Network, common community organizer with Mothers Out Front. We are a concerned group of mothers, grandmothers, and parents that want to fight for, to grant our children a livable planet and a livable future. Like my wonderful friend Alice said, we must take action on climate change, and it has to start at a local level, because it's not happening at the federal level, and it's too slow at the state level. So we believe that you can make a difference here for our children's sake. What we're asking today is for our schools, where our children spend most of their childhood, literally, to be the best that they can be, and we're asking for your help to make that happen. We want our schools to be net zero, which means that all the energy that they consume is produced on-site by clean renewable energy. We want you to make a commitment by next year that you, every new school that will be built will be redesigned to be net zero. It's not so far-fetched. Arlington is doing it. They have a wonderful school called Discovery Elementary, which is not only net zero, is energy net positive, meaning that they produce more energy than they actually consume. And it provides a wonderful educational opportunity for the children to learn. They can, they can learn how much energy their school is producing and how much energy they're consuming and using in their classrooms. And actually, I also wanted to invite you tonight to visit that school with us. We're going to be there October 25th at 10:30 a.m., and you're all welcome and invited to come and join us on that wonderful, on the tour of that wonderful school. But before anything else, which I just want to tell you, our children's future is also in your hands, and there is, you can make a huge difference. And we want their school to be clean. We want them to be powered by renewable energy. We want them to be energy efficient, and we want them to be for looking to the future, the technology that they already exist. So it's just really up to you how to act. It's possible. It's happening, and it's saving a lot, it can save our schools a lot of money. In Arlington County, the schools that I mentioned, Discovery Elementary, they save $100,000, over $100,000 every year in, in energy. And that can provide salary for two teachers. So that's a huge savings also that we can redistribute to our children for their, for their resources and also for, for teacher's salary. So it's just a no-brainer. So I'm just asking you to act and to come with us to see Discovery Elementary on October 25th at 10:30. Thank you. And can I give you some fast facts, just a sheet?
Give it to the clerk. She'll pass them out. Thank you, Ms. Botino. Next will be Jennifer Gilli.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Gilli, and my address is on file. I believe last month, Dr. George announced that it was Bullying Prevention Month, and I think it is a very important issue in our county system. We teach our children not to bully before they even get into school, hopefully. The teachers talk about it, and principals send home notes or emails or tweet about it. Clubs are formed in schools to prevent it, and so many people are always trying to figure out how to solve the issue. It's a very difficult one to solve, especially when there are many people in authority who feel that they can get away with it, and oftentimes, they do. Perception is very real, as we all know. How you all are perceived as board members by the work that is done here for our students might not be the type of person that you really are. Many parents don't want to come to these meetings because they feel that they cannot speak up honestly about their children and their schools without fear of repercussions. There's a very real perception, too, in this county. Too many parents talk to our group but don't come to these meetings. Quote, "If I say something, he or she will be targeted in the classroom or on the field, so I will just complain on social media and make bigger issues," unquote. And even for those of us who do come and speak out, there's always a perception that we are making too much noise at this meeting, and negative things might happen at the schools we fight for. Maybe just a coincidence, but it's a perception. When children see these things happening to their teachers, schools, et cetera, the perceptions are way out of whack. They don't always have all of the information, and we know what happens when kids know a little about something. Perceptions are real. Look at Dr. Walts. For all we know, he could hate snow and cold weather, but our perception of him is that snow days are his favorite part of the year. What kids see and hear at school and then on social media affects them, and they already have so many other obstacles that they have to deal with. On to another topic. I know there's been a lot of talk about the 14th High School and complaints about where to put it, et cetera. Recently, in Alexandria County, the school board chose to make TC Williams bigger as the only public high school in the city, rather than build another high school, for equity purposes. Kind of amazing that they only have one public high school in Alexandria City. Obviously, we cannot go to one big high school in this county for all the students, but why not consider rebuilding two of the oldest schools in the east side in the same location why not consider rebuilding two of the oldest schools in the east side in the same locations that they are, but obviously bigger to accommodate more students? Both of these schools already have the traffic pattern solved, already have the land for the current school, are near where the new high school is going to be located, possibly, and both could benefit from a forty-three or forty-seven-year-old renovation. It's just a thought, something to consider. They both have to be bigger schools to accommodate the influx of students that you all expect. And again, up in Fairfax County, where land is a premium, they build up rather than out. Thank you for listening. Perceptions are out there, bullying is out there, and a place for the new high school is nowhere. Thank you.
My son insisted on joining me. My name is Nicole Eikoff, and these are my children, Andra and Amalia. We live on Battery Hill Circle in Woodbridge, and I'm part of Mothers Out Front as well. So I just wanted to give us a chance to all raise our hands who are here with Mothers Out Front. We are all concerned mothers, and Alice covered why it is a major concern for our students and why they are so deadly afraid for their futures and distracted to the point of leaving school so that they can ask for leaders to take their, to take their job seriously and to do something about climate. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that. We've already heard a little bit about bullying. We've heard about the concern that children have, but, you know, it is something that I had a student who wanted to come here tonight and talk to you about climate change and about how cool he thought solar schools were, and he said that he didn't want to because he was afraid of being bullied for this purpose, because bullying is happening around children just asking for justice, climate justice. So I also wanted to mention that Mothers Out Front is a very effective organization, and the ask that we're asking you is quite reasonable. We have recently won the award from the UN for Climate Action. It's Women for Results, and so that is something that the National Organization of Mothers Out Front also represents. And I wanted to say just one more thing tonight, and that is that if we accept that our students are sufficiently worried about this issue, and we decide that we want to act, it is the school board that makes the most sense to start. It is with the school board because you are the ones who have almost half of our budget in Prince William County. And so many schools, like ninety schools, right?
Yeah.
So we have ninety schools. That's so many buildings that can be either built anew, built fresh, or renewed, renovated, to make them more efficient and also to help them to reach that net neutral goal. And also, I want to read a quote to you from the Prince William County website for the Prince William County schools, and it is under sustainability and clean energy. One of, this is quote, from the Prince William County School website. "One of our goals is for PWCS, Prince William Schools, to become carbon neutral." This is your goal. We want to help you with that goal. I think that going to Discovery Elementary will help you to be inspired and see that it's possible. And when we have the technology available for our students to see, I believe that they will have the hope for the future, because they will see their leaders doing it, they will see literally in front of them what that technology looks like, and they'll be able to repeat it. There is hope, and you're it.
Thank you. Kelly Martin.
Kelly Martin, Okaquan District, address on file. Mr. Chairman, Board Superintendent Waltz, thank you for having us here. I'm here to revisit the stream and pond damage to Old Bridge Estates below the Jenkins Elementary School. After that meeting, I met with the Construction Department, who agreed to do walkthroughs and provide a report of those findings. And to date, they've done the walkthroughs, one with OBE, our community, and one with the County Watershed Department. We corresponded today. We have not seen the official reports. The correspondence from both the Watershed Department and the Construction Department do not seem to agree in terms of responsibility and actions. I'll forward all of that to you under separate cover with explanation. So our request is that the commitment be honored, one, that we get a copy of the report so the community is aware of the findings and can comment on those and the remediation before it's decided upon. And secondly, that the board place importance on this activity, provide a detention, and prioritize it among your administration staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kate Olson Flynn. I'm happy to see you all. I wanted to share with you the critical elements of an equitable school system as part of my ongoing effort to improve our schools that have more disadvantaged students. This research was laid out in 2010 by Dr. Linda Darling Hammond, who found that there are key factors in improving achievement for all kids. That is, of course, assuming that there are no disparity in school facilities, which we continue to have in Prince William County schools. It is no surprise that high-quality teachers who teach robust curriculum are the most critical elements for achievement in an equitable school system. The problem is that high-quality teachers and robust curriculum are mostly found in schools in wealthier, upper-middle-class communities. So my question to you is, how will you ensure that disadvantaged kids in all schools have access to these key elements? For example, it is admirable that you implemented such an ambitious senior internship program at Colgan, a wealthy school in the county. Why was it only implemented there? To make it equitable for all, the challenge is to offer this robust learning experience in all schools in the county, particularly those with more disadvantaged students and students of color. The answers to improving schools aren't mysterious or too academic. They just take you to make the effort and provide the funding to truly implement them for kids that really need it. One, fund schools adequately and equitably. That means that we need to add incentives to teach in high-need schools, such as pay, but also smaller class sizes, less in-class teaching time for planning and collaborating. Two, organize teaching around standards of learning that focus on higher-order thinking and inquiry through rigorous content. Too often, our disadvantaged kids get the dumbed-down curriculum that is practiced and drilled skills on worksheets that provide no advanced learning. Three, performance assessments that require in-depth knowledge of content and higher-order skills, not multiple-choice tests. We need kids to be able to think and solve problems, not just choose the best answer. Four, invest in recruiting top teacher education candidates. Work with George Mason, James Madison, Marymount, Mary Washington to have interns work in Prince William County during their internship to encourage them to find jobs here. Five, pay teachers salaries that are competitive with other school divisions and professions. This should be an investment in our future, not a financial burden. And six, support ongoing teacher development and learning by ensuring mentoring for beginning teachers that isn't just a check-in. When you go through the points in this list, it seems so simple that you say to yourself, "Oh, you already knew the answers." Yet it seems it still needs to be done in high-need schools. My hope is that this information will help you begin to make the much-needed changes toward achievement for all kids in this county. Thank you.
I'll announce the next group of folks. John Zook, they can come up to the front if they wish. Brandy Workman, Richard Jesse, Robert Buckley, and Janine Walrath. John Zook first.
Good evening. I'm John Zook. I live in the Brentsville District. My address is on file. I'm here speaking as a parent of four children who attended Prince William County schools and as a grandparent who now is, now has grandkids in the schools. Couple weeks ago, you all voted on a resolution in opposition of the development in the rural Crescent. I'd like to thank Ms. Satterwhite, Mr. Tranum, and Mr. Deutsch for voting in favor of that resolution to oppose the build-out of the rural area. I'd planned on speaking that night on the importance, but frankly, I was a little tired. I blew it off, and I really thought it was a no-brainer vote. One would think slower, smarter development would be crucial for the infrastructure to catch up to the number of students attending county schools. And I thought the school board would be smart enough, especially in an election year, to put their political differences aside and work together in support of the students and staff. Apparently, I was wrong. You finally now have a plan to eliminate trailers. Actually worked together with the Board of Supervisors to come up with a plan, a much-needed plan, as some schools have as many as twenty-one trailers. A new school, a new high school, which is probably three years, maybe a little older, has five already. When you think about it, you all were voting on a resolution. Nothing binding, nothing really has any teeth to slow development. You all had an opportunity to show a united front, to send a message in support of the employees, students, and parents in the county. The five of you who voted it down and would like to see the rural area built out, I can only make assumptions as to why. But I can tell you, if it is built out, you can take that trailer plan you all worked so hard to approve and throw it out. It's simple math. Your main focus, your job, should be what's best for the kids, what's best for the staff, and what's best for the education process. And yet, some of you vote plain and simple to continue with overcrowding our schools. It's an election year, and I think only two of you are running unopposed. I hope every one in the room is paying attention, as well as those watching, because I am. I know those in the rural area are, as well as those whose kids and, and family members work in the overcrowded school systems. I got to tell you, when I pull up the website for the Board of Supervisors, I get a little confused. Next to each name is listed nonpartisan. I'd love to see you all start working as a nonpartisan group. If you can't, simply list your party affiliation. If you're a Democrat or a Republican, list it. Own it. Embrace it. Be proud of it, because we can, we can see right through you. You're really not fooling anybody. Thank you.
My name is Brandy Workman, and my address is on file with a clerk. I'm going to lighten this up a little bit. So October is National Dyslexia Awareness Month. I have a daughter who was recently diagnosed with dyslexia. And ironically, a year ago this month, I became aware of what dyslexia is. Some of you may be very familiar with it, while others may still possess misconceptions. I once thought dyslexia was simply a reversal of letters. Dyslexia is not a visual problem or a problem seeing letters in the wrong direction. It is, in fact, a different wiring of the brain. It is an unexpected difficulty in reading for an individual who has the intelligence to be a much better reader. It is most commonly due to a difficulty in phonological processing, the appreciation of the individual sounds of language, which affects the ability of an individual to speak, read, spell, and often learn a second language. It affects about one in five students, according to the Yale Center for Dyslexia and Creativity, and represents eighty to ninety percent of all those with learning disabilities. It impacts people in varying degrees, but it has no connection to their cognitive ability. Dyslexics oftentimes have a very low phonemic awareness, and while they can see the letters on a page, they struggle to manipulate those letters into sounds and consequently words. They struggle with fluency, comprehension, decoding and encoding, which we know as sounding things out and spelling. It is considered a specific learning disability. However, I see it as a learning difference. Some even say that those with dyslexia are hardwired for creativity, intuitiveness, and oftentimes being able to think outside of the box. Because of their intelligence, lateral thinking, spatial awareness, or spatial reasoning and problem-solving skills, dyslexic individuals are well-suited for jobs in science, technology, engineering, art, and math. You may be familiar with some of their work, but not their names. When you use your iPhone, a car, the light bulb, you watch a classic movie such as E.T. -- I'm dating myself. You are benefiting from the work of someone who is dyslexic. These great contributions to society are a result of the work of people such as Steve Jobs, Bill Gates, Henry Ford, Thomas Edison, Albert Einstein, Steven Spielberg, and Alexander Graham Bell, just to name a few. The list goes on and on for artists, doctors, scientists, explorers, teachers, journalists, and those who stand out in their respective fields. I do not have near enough time to tell you the success stories. And if this wasn't enough good news, dyslexic students can actually learn to read if given the proper instruction. If you suspect your child is dyslexic, don't wait. Start asking questions now, and a great place to start is at the Prince William County Parent Resource Center. I'm going to say that one more time, in case anybody's watching, the Prince William County Parent Resource Center. They're amazing. So with all things, early intervention is key, and with early screening, early diagnosis, and appropriate accommodations, dyslexic individuals can become highly successful students and adults. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jesse.
Hi, my name is Richard Jesse. My address is on file. I want to talk to you this evening about the position of the Omsbuzman and why the board decided to hire the person. I think the board decided that there were some internal issues with the way things were handled with employees, and they wanted a resolution. The issue, however, I think, with a person that can only listen and advise and send people to other places is something that you guys did not really thoroughly think about. Because as working with the NAACP on the Legal Redress Committee as a consultant mainly, I see a lot of issues where the people who are accused of wrongdoing are complaining that the investigation that is done by this organization is very biased in many cases. Many people feel that their witnesses, their people who support their positions, are not being interviewed by risk management and are not being heard, and the investigation that you get is not a thorough and fair investigation. The analogy, I think the Omsbuzman person and position is very good, but I treat it like a cake with a nice icing on top of frosting. The Omsbuzman is the frosting on the cake. You go through, it tastes good, you love it, but then you get to the cake, and the cake is horrible. When you have a person who can only advise people to go somewhere, and wherever they can go, if that is a flaw in the system, that system is a problem. And I think that's where you have today. Your system of investigation needs repair. Thank you.
Robert Buckley.
Hi, my name is Robert Buckley. I'm from Lake Ridge. I'm here to urge the, that every parent in every school given the opportunity to hear a gang awareness seminar from the Prince William County Police Department. Last year, I was given the opportunity to, by Principal Amy Schott at Rockwood School, to request a seminar on gang awareness at Rockwood School. The officer gave a great, great seminar for elementary students. Then I, the next day, Principal Calhoun and Vice Principal Dutchro asked me what subject I wanted to talk at Lake Ridge Middle School. And I said, "I'd like to hear some gang awareness seminar again." Well, he said, they said yes, and it was scheduled for a month later, and not a week before the thing, two groups of youngsters decided to have a gang fight in the back of Lake Ridge Middle School. Shots were fired, and so when we had the gang awareness thing, people were more aware of gang awareness. Officer Simmons, who gave the seminar at Lake Ridge Middle School, did an excellent job. He went through all the signs, the graffiti, the colors, and it was very eye-opening to the audience there. Gangs don't know, don't discriminate against age. They don't discriminate against economic status. They don't discriminate against nationalities. They're prevalent all over the country. Some gangs are local, some gangs are international. When a kid, when a child is in, when your child is in the county lockup or in a casket because he's a victim of a drive-by shooting, it's too late to say, "I didn't know about it." I urge everybody to have these things in every school. I urge everybody to have these things in every school.
Janine Woolrab.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Last month, I was here and spoke to you. Again, I thank you for your service to our county. My name is Janine Woolrab. My family and I have resided in Prince William County Old Bridge Estates for 15 years, and my address is on file. Tonight, I'm here to follow up regarding the Old Bridge Estates Smoke Town Road Pond and Channels issue. As a reminder, last month, I presented a timeline highlighting for, that for over a year, inquiries have been made about when the Old Bridge Estates Smoke Town Road Pond and Channels will be dredged and restored. I provided photos of the pond and channels deterioration, copies of my Old Bridge Estates community petition, and petition signatures. To date, what has occurred? One, a meeting gathering on Tuesday, the 10th of September, took place at the pond, attended by Prince William County School Construction Staff members, Prince William County Environmental Services, Old Bridge Estates Board members, and Old Bridge Estates Homeowners Association Management. An assessment and observation walkthrough was done and was supposed to yield a report and plan and timeframe to address what is going to be done about the pond's deterioration. Two, my petition continues to receive support and signatures, and tonight, I will again provide those copies. Three, I remain concerned and vigilant in monitoring the pond and channels. To date, what has not occurred? One, no confirmed commitment, plan of action timeline from Prince William County. Two, no information has been received to be able to pass it along to our Old Bridge Estates community. Three, no dredging or restoring of the pond or channels has occurred. To date, what continues to unfortunately occur? One, the pond and channels deterioration. Two, wildlife sustaining benefits deterioration. And three, the pond and channels intended water retention functions deterioration. In closing, my request is the same as in my email dated 6 September to each of you, which read, "It is my hope the board will make an immediate decision to take action on funding and authorizing for dredging and restoring of the Old Bridge Estates Pond and Channels, specifically on Old Smoke Town Road. In addition, that the proposed timeline and strategy for the work that is going to be done be provided to the Old Bridge Estates Homeowners Association, Board of Directors, and the Old Bridge Estates Community Manager." Receiving this information is important, so it can be reviewed and shared with the Old Bridge Estates homeowners. As last month, to once again be clear, the Old Bridge Estates Pond and Channels deterioration is no fault of the Old Bridge Estates homeowners. It is the fault of mismanagement of the worksite runoff caused by the Prince William Parkway New Elementary School construction, which was managed by the Prince William County Schools Department. Please do the right thing now. Thank you.
Thank you. That will complete citizens' comments. We'll move on to the 15.01 citizens, or, I'm sorry, 16.01, the annual school calendar. Mr. Iman.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, Vice Chairman Wilk, members of the board, Dr. Walz. Well, with our new reorganization of the Accountability Office, now with the Deputy Superintendent, it gives me, for the first time, the honor and privilege of introducing Dr. Jennifer Casada to present our recommended calendar for the next school year. So, Dr. Casada.
Good evening, Chairman Latif, School Board members, Dr. Walz. It's that time to present the calendar. We just started the 1920 school year, but it is time to be thinking forward to 2020, 2021, which is a mouthful to say, so if I trip up, sorry. Our purpose tonight is to present a proposed calendar, and it includes all the days for students and teachers. Some reminders: We have to have at least 180 days of instruction and/or a minimum of 990 instructional hours. And the calendar you're going to see tonight was developed based on past calendars and state requirements, federal holidays, et cetera. And with all that in place, there tends not to be a whole lot of movement. So the board has received this proposed calendar, and it's posted in Board Doc. So here we go. Okay, so if you remember, last year, we got to talk about the calendar a couple times because the Virginia Legislative, the General Assembly passed legislation that removed the prohibition on school divisions starting before Labor Day without a waiver. So now, we can, we have a little more flexibility, but we have to have that four-day weekend around Labor Day, which we had this year. We implemented that change. As a result to changes to Virginia law, and just to see where we were, we did a general poll about the calendar in June 2019, just to get some general starting points. And then, as a result, we developed multiple options, which were shared first with a calendar committee in August. They provided feedback through an online survey tool, and some via email and some via phone calls. This committee includes representatives that are parents, students, teachers, principals, association representatives, and other staff members, and an election board representative. In addition, public comment was sought through another poll in August and September. We presented drafts to the superintendent's staff, and we're here with, tonight, with their recommendation. Okay, so the first poll I talked about was announced through the new This Scoop, and there were over 2,000 responses. Preferences were pretty consistent to what we've seen in the past, with most people preferring a start before Labor Day, and another 5% saying they didn't have a preference. And the other things that were of major importance to folks were the idea of having a two-week winter break and ending school as early as possible. This was mentioned as the thing that came up the most from respondents. Those results were used in the development of the calendar option. Three options were presented for the calendar committees. The words you see in the kind of graphic on the right are some of the things that came up the most in comments. The options resulted from that initial poll, and really, the differences were just in start and end dates. And so 92% of the respondents preferred the option presented tonight that had one minor change, which I'll tell you. Then, we went back to the big public, and we had over 3,300 respondents. I can tell you, this was a representative sample. 63% of the respondents were parents, 38% staff, 7% students. Parents and staff could, people could be in multiple categories. And we had parents from students at all grade levels. We asked folks to rank the options, and the option, again, you're going to see tonight, was rated as the first or second choice by the majority, vast majority of respondents. All right, that's enough background. Here we go. So I'm going to walk through some highlights, and then, the actual list of the calendar was also available in Board Docs. Here's the quick summary, and you can see, I've got a side-by-side of the calendar we're in right now, and the calendar that's being proposed for next year. And what you can see is, they look very, very similar in terms of starting and end date. Winter break, because of when the holidays fall, shifts a little bit. It is two full weeks. And then, spring break is, of course, different because of when that falls. Okay, so here are some key dates. The first day of school would be Tuesday, August 25th, and the calendar does keep that four-day Labor Day holiday weekend, which would really mean three, so you'd have a couple of four-day weeks at the beginning of the school year. We'd continue the practice of the Division-Wide Professional Learning Day that's on Columbus Day. End of the marking period is always when it falls, in November. November of 2020 is, of course, a presidential election year, and this calendar would keep to the commitment of schools being completely closed on that Election Day to students and staff, with a virtual workday for teachers being proposed. The Veterans Day holiday is, of course, maintained. The next part, the Thanksgiving tradition we've had of a three-day break will continue. The winter break would be two full weeks. You see the holidays in the end of the second marking period, end of the first semester, toward the end of January. And then, finally, you see, again, the same kind of holidays we have with Washington's Birthday, President's Day, the end of the third marking period, and then, which would fall in alignment with when spring break is. And at the end of the spring break, that Monday would be a teacher workday for students, I'm sorry, teacher workday, no school for students. And the last day of school would be June 11th. All right, I know I talk fast, so I'm going to take you back one more time. Start date would be August 25th, that's a Tuesday. End date would be June 11th, for a total of 180 days, so meeting that minimum requirement. Other days that you see there are when teachers report, and then, the end-of-year teacher date. What is the recommendation? So the superintendent's staff and the committee strongly recommend this option. Responses from the public support this recommendation. It parallels the 1920 calendar, and it parallels some calendars in other jurisdictions, including Fairfax County, who adopted their 2020, 2021 calendar pretty early in comparison to the past. Some considerations: We tried to balance marking periods to the greatest extent possible with a little bit of fluctuation because of that Election Day issue in November. Any changes to the calendar would necessitate changes to the marking period dates. And any later start that keeps a two-week winter break would lead to school ending June 18th, if you started a week later. That's just a consideration for you. For the public watching, there will be a calendar download that'll be available once the School Board approves the calendar. The calendar download is available already for this current year, if anybody wants to put it and sync it to their phone. Thank you.
Questions, discussion? Mr. Wilk.
I think Ms. Jesse had it. Ms. Jesse.
First of all, I want to thank you for the comprehensive survey and using that data to guide this calendar. And I also wanted to ask, the Election Day, that was always an issue with people being on the property and teachers being in the building or parent conferences during that time, and I'm pleased to see that you worked that out. The Virtual Professional Development Day, I was curious when I read that, how is that going to work?
I can't speak to how that's going to work in terms of what that would... Do you want to speak to it?
Teachers will have...
I love the idea, but I'm just curious.
Well, because of the digital nature of the work that can be done remotely, they're able to continue doing that kind of work, not having to be in the building. Whoops. Did I mean?
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. A couple of questions. I want to jump on the virtual workday. Has there been a discussion just to completely give the day off for teachers? Or does it have to have some type of, if we don't put some type of PD on that day, is that mandated by a certain requirement in the contract, or?
So the way the calendar's structured now is that it has the 195 days for teachers, including that day. So if that day was not a workday for teachers, that day would have to go someplace. So there'd have to be another day that's not currently showing for teachers to work.
Thank you. Other question, just out of curiosity, with the survey design and questions, when you opened it up to the general public, when you did the ranking question, why did you guys go with a ranking question as opposed to pick just one, your first choice, just to give that, have a number there in that presentation?
That's a great question. We did it that way because we'd seen some other divisions do things that way with ranking, and because there were three options, it was kind of a way to get a sense of where people fell. And so we did it on a way that showed us kind of a power scale, so you could see where people liked it and where they didn't, and it was just a different, a different look.
Okay, no, just curious. Finally, also, anyone come up, any discussion about the fact that starting right after New Year's Day might be a little bit soon for that holiday? Any discussion about extending the holiday break, excuse me, to January 2nd, getting the kids back on the 3rd, or would that put the kids already midweek? How does that work?
The kids would actually not come back till the 4th. The 1st is Friday.
Oh, that's perfect.
So, yes, so that, thank you for that question, for that clarification. The 1st falls on a Friday, as does Christmas Day, and so that's where that falls. And so the school would not reopen until January 4th.
Okay, I just thought it seemed really soon.
No, great question.
Okay. Any further, Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you. I did notice that we're starting school on a Tuesday, and it's not because of Labor Day. It's August 25th with the professional day on the 24th. What's the reasoning behind that? Because that just seems kind of strange.
So what I can say is, because it's, like, this year, we're starting on the 26th, and instead of moving, there's been concern sometimes for moving any earlier with starting. It was a way, that's what Fairfax is also doing, it's a way to start and not have it be that much earlier. That was the one tweak that happened from the original proposal, is a way to ease in a little bit.
Okay, so we'll have, the first two weeks of school then would be four days each, because we have to take that following, the week later, we have to take the Friday off.
You'd have, yes, yes, three weeks, actually, that would have four days.
Three, that's right, Labor Day, okay. Wow, okay, thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you for your presentation. It's one of my favorites every year. And thank you for all the work that you and your team undertakes in order to get this accomplished. Something to consider is, as Ms. Satterwhite was saying, I don't personally have an issue with the Tuesday start, but maybe working cooperatively with some of the programs that we have contracts with, or we share, like Alphabet, because what happens is, parents who aren't on vacation or don't have the luxury of taking a vacation now have to find childcare for four of those, three of those weeks off. And a lot of times, those programs are already a week, there's a week gap, so it creates another problem for some of our parents who may be in a situation where childcare is an issue. So it's just something to think about as we plan calendars, because that is a very real issue for a lot of parents. And there's usually that gap time, so it creates an even bigger gap, or maybe challenges for some of our families. So I don't know that we can do anything about that.
I will take that, I'll take that information.
Because of the way calendars fall, but as we proceed in the future, it might be something worth considering.
Thank you.
Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you just walk us through, at high level, what the two other options were that people were voting on?
So the two other options would start one week later and two weeks later, so not, but on Monday, so starting on the 31st of August, ending June 18th, with pretty much everything else in the middle being the same, or starting after Labor Day, which would be September 8th and ending June 25th.
Gotcha.
Good question.
Ms. Chenam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to notice that, I notice our PWA contingent is smiling at the thought of three, four-day weeks to start the school year. I appreciate that as well. Everybody needs to kind of ease into that school year. So do the parents and the students. I do want to compliment you, as far as this, over 12 years, I think this is the easiest calendar discussion I've seen so far coming along. So I guess, we are a learning organization. We can learn over a period of decade or so, so that's good. But I do want to congratulate, like I said, I think the calendar looks great, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Well, as a parent of four kids, I liked this year's schedule, which this is very similar to, correct?
Mm-hmm, it's very similar.
This year, we had two four-days.
Yes, just because, yes, of when other holidays fall that shift, Labor Day move, yeah.
Okay, outstanding. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts? All right. Thank you, Dr. Casada. Thank you, Mr. Iman. We'll be moving on to superintendent's time. Dr. Walz.
Thank you, and good evening. I'd like to begin by sharing information on the SAT scores released last week by College Board. PWCS mean score is 11,05. That is up five points from last year, and is 66 points higher than the overall score for graduates nationwide. I want to address the point that has been made, that our mean score is eight points lower than the state's mean score. We are closer to the state's score than we have been in the past. Please keep in mind that while the number of state test takers has dropped by more than 600 students, the number of test takers in PWCS has actually increased. I do not want to limit access to students taking the test in order to inflate our scores. We need to continue to use inclusionary practices, not exclusionary practices, in our college readiness testing. I'm especially proud that the students who chose to take the SAT reflect the diversity of our division. Our overall student body is now 70% minority, as are 63% of the PWCS students who chose to take the SAT. I would like to add that African-American students in PWCS outperform peers in Virginia and nationwide on the SAT, and Hispanic students in PWCS outperform peers nationwide. However, we are committed to continuous improvement in all areas for our students, and to that end, we will be forming a working group of leading high school teachers and administrators to identify further opportunities for support to ensure our students achieve their full potential on the SAT and other college readiness tests. I have more good news to share about the academic success of our students. PWCS, for the second consecutive year, has all schools accredited. The Virginia Department of Education has three levels in the accreditation system. And accredited is the highest level in that three-tier level system. All of our schools are at the top level. Other jurisdictions, including Fairfax, have one or more schools accredited with conditions, so they do not have all schools at the highest level, as we do. Congratulations to our students, teachers, support staff, and school leaders, also the parents, who can be proud of the hard work they have done to improve academic achievement. On Saturday, September 21st, more than 20 bands participated in the Colgan High School Classic. I stopped by for a brief visit and watched the Battlefield High School Marching Bobcats perform an excellent show. Congratulations to Colgan Band Director Don McGee, and Colgan Band boosters, and the many, many talented student organizers. It was a... It was a huge undertaking. Later that evening, I attended the Hilton High School Athletic Hall of Fame, the event which was sponsored by the Varsity Athletic Boosters, recognized 16 outstanding athletics, athletes, or contributors to the athletic program. Congratulations to the 2019 inductees and to Hilton High School for hosting a fabulous ceremony and raising money for the boosters. Last Wednesday afternoon, I was invited to attend the Patriot High School Eco Club's ribbon-cutting ceremony for an outdoor living classroom called the Patriot Pond. I am excited about the opportunities this outdoor living environment will offer to our students. And speaking of Patriot, ABC 7 News and Sports selected the varsity football game of Hilton versus Patriot for last week's Game of the Week. Both schools received outstanding media coverage, and I had the privilege to visit both schools on Friday morning as well as attend the game. I was rooting for both teams, but in the end, the Patriot pioneers pulled off the win. In addition to local media attention, our school division also attracts the attention of the national media. So, I am going to start off with Sports Turf, which is a national magazine. And the September edition of Sports Turf Magazine features the Brentsville District High Schools' award-winning turf program on the cover and in multiple places inside the magazine. Kudos to Andrew Miller, turf program advisor, and all the students and staff who contribute to the Donald Lambert Field, the field of the year in the United States. The summer edition, another magazine, EdTech, features an article on A.J. Phillips, our Director of Technology, and how she coordinated efforts to expand our network infrastructure. Congratulations, A.J. Earlier this week, I had the opportunity to meet Unique and Chocolate Puddin', two cows visiting Belmont Elementary School as part of the division-wide unit focusing on watershed. Students in elementary and middle schools from across the division visited Belmont Elementary to learn more about the cows and their impact on watershed through the Science Center there. And I just wanted to mention, as someone who grew up in Kansas, there are quite a few of our students who have not been actually around farm animals. So, this was a great experience for them. While I visited, students from Potomac Middle School in Belmont were experiencing the hands-on learning in science. It was a fun learning experience, and I want to show you just a little short video clip, kind of give you a sense of that experience. So, they called it "When Cow Meets Goat," and that's all for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Wonderful news about all the successes with, that you pointed out. Next, we'll move on to 1701, Special Education. No, 1701, isn't it? Oh, no, 1801. It's different on my script. Sorry. Special Education Advisory Committee Appointment. Dr., Mr. Wilk? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has already been brought up, and she has already spoken for herself tonight, quite eloquently, very talented. But with dyslexia being the most common learning disability impacting 70 to 80% of all of our special needs students with disabilities, and 15% of our overall population, I felt it was necessary to have a representative on our CAC committee of someone who is very talented, someone who's very passionate in this area, and someone in my district who I can relate to about the importance of advocating for our special needs children. Brandy Workman is a very talented individual, a parent in my district, whose wonderful children attend Henderson Elementary. I have met her multiple times. We have had great conversations. The reason why I know any of these facts are because of her. She is a passionate, caring individual who really believes, with that line that she said tonight, that if you suspect, don't wait, start asking questions now. I feel more than ever, we need someone like her and her advocacy and dedication on our CAC committee representing the Potomac District. So, Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Brandy Workman to represent the Potomac District for CAC for a two-year term.
I'll second.
I'll second from Mr. Deutsch. Any discussion? Please vote. Sorry. I was fixing my script.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Safe Schools Advisory Council, okay. Very good. Excellent. Next, is the Safe Schools Advisory Council appointment for my spot. Yeah, we had somebody... Yeah, so, there was an opening on the board, and so, I am recommending, I'll make the action, that the Prince William County School Board approve the appointment of Jennifer Smith as a representative for the Chairman-at-Large on the Safe Schools Advisory Council for a two-year term. Do you have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Thank you. She's a lovely lady, committed to safety in our schools, and very excited to appoint her. Any discussion? Vote, please vote.
Vote is seven yes, one absent. Motion passed.
Outstanding. Thank you. Thank you all. We will now move to Board Matters. And today, we will start with Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do we have the PowerPoint?
I'm not sure.
Here we go. Awesome. Anyway, this week, we had an exciting time at Hilton, as we got ready for the Game of the Week on ABC. We had a packed house at Hilton at 5:00 in the morning, probably about 300, 400 students, cheer, band, football. And it was an exciting way to start out the morning, as these kids cheered their heart out, made it on national TV, and had a great time. And so, just want to give a huge shout-out to them. They are a fun, incredible bunch of students. And we played a hard-fought competitive game at Patriot. Like any great games, sometimes you need a fun bet to go with them. And we kind of came up a little short. And so, myself and Mr. Trenum are wearing Patriot shirts. We would have been wearing Hilton shirts if it had gone a different way. But I haven't been around a more excited, energized bunch of kids, and it was a whole lot of fun that morning. So, it was great, great publicity for the county, a lot of fun. So, great times. Also, got to hit a lot of back-to-school nights in the last couple of weeks. And one of those in particular, I was over at Signal Hill, and I had this young student named Dash, who is in their student leadership program. He's a fifth grader, and he showed me around all of the classrooms, introduced me, and was just an incredibly young student. And just loved being able to meet different teachers, students, and seeing the leadership of our students on display. It was a fun, fun part of back-to-school. And just, so, been a lot of fun. We're looking forward to the school year continuing well. Last board time during Board Matters, I raised three things, program capacity numbers. I'm excited that during middle school boundaries, we're going to have the program capacity numbers. It's going to be a huge improvement. We also just got the report on the audit on our school capacity numbers and projections, and so, that's going to be very helpful to review as we get into CIP time. Also, just wanted to re-request that we have a presentation on the Old Bridge Estates, the environmental impacts from Jenkins, I requested at the last meeting. If we can have that timeline and strategy, I think that'll help with the community as well. Thank you all so much.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked for a little additional time, because I had previously asked that every time the Joint CIP Committee meets, that we have an update provided to the board. So, we did meet earlier this week. As Mr. Deutsch so kindly said, we received the report on school enrollment data. I am very pleased that Prince William County Schools is meeting the academic standard. We are within 1%, which is the goal. I think, actually, the goal's within 5%, and we are within 1%, which is fantastic news. There were several recommendations, around 20. Some of them fall on the school division side, and some of them fall on the county side. I think that overall, we are very well-equipped, and we have an extremely good track record in history of being very accurate on our school enrollment numbers. We do have a few pockets of enrollment where we're at 5%, and that's on a school, on a per-school basis, not overall. So, I was very pleased to hear that. One of the things that I think should be most noted, and that I took away from the committee meeting, is that throughout the county, the county is doing small area development plans. And one thing that was noted, or brought to my attention specifically to the Woodbridge District, and I ask the general public to be very aware of this, is that whatever the small area plan that is approved, that's more than likely what your area will look like. And specific to the Woodbridge District, there is a piece in that small area plan where it talks about urban schools. And I just want to remind our Board of County Supervisors that we build the schools, and that it would be, it would be collaborative, we need better collaboration between this board and the Board of County Supervisors when it comes to what areas are going to look like and what schools that they are suggesting that we build in that area, because that's really our domain. And that's part of the Joint CIP Committee's purpose, is that we work collaboratively together. So, I was very surprised to learn that they are anticipating for the school division to build urban-style schools, when we hadn't had that conversation. So, that's something that was brought to my attention, specific for my district. I haven't reviewed everyone else's small area plans or other area developments, but I think when we talk about resolutions on this board and those such natures, we try very well, very hard to maintain those boundary lines between our two boards where we have jurisdiction. And I think that this is another reminder of why this committee is important and why we should continue to work collaboratively together, so that we can ensure the success for all of our county residents and students and staff, and not work just in such a tunnel vision that we might be defeating the purpose. So, that's something to be aware of from a community standpoint, and also from a budgetary standpoint. More people brings more students. So, that's the update from the Joint CIP Committee. We will be meeting again on October 28th to continue to review some agenda items. The enrollment is, audit report is one of them. I just wanted to say, for my Board Matters time, myself, I know, a lot of other board members, I went to a lot of back-to-school nights. I was a pleasure to visit Belmont, Featherstone, Kilby, Marumsco, Potomac View. I apologize profusely to Vaughn Elementary. I did not make it there this year, but I anticipate making to some back-to-school, other family night events. Unfortunately, it was the same night as my son's back-to-school night, and I think he kind of wanted mom to be there. So, I am very excited about all the literacy programs I heard at the elementary schools. Everyone has, seems to have a different style of implementing it, but it's school-wide. I love reading, and I love the innovative approaches that our principals are taking to getting a school community involved in reading and carrying on literacy as a priority. I also had the pleasure of, thanks to an invite by Sharon Kelly, speaking at the Public Safety Awareness Day at Garfield High School this past Saturday. I wanted to thank Garfield High School's marching band. A few members came out and successfully put on a wonderful drumline show for the spectators out there. I just wanted to thank the marching band coordinator and the students who showed up and took time out of their Saturday. I know that there were 1,000 things going on, and they even hung out during the rain. So, thank you very much for the invite, Ms. Kelly, into Garfield High School's marching band. I also wanted to bring up, special kudos to Michelle Roper. I think she visited just as many elementary schools as all of us did. I just wanted to thank her again, to her dedication and time to come out and do professional development and work with the staff when it comes to special education. And along that lines, I also wanted to thank Brenda Bowden at Forest Park High School. She invited me to her parent group for special education to speak about special education and programming, and what we do for our high school students, and what life is like for some of our students afterwards. And I encourage anyone, they meet, I think, on the third Wednesday or third Monday at Forest Park. I know it's on their website, but it's a great group, and it's another route for special education parents. And along that lines, I'm wondering if the board could receive an update on Freedom's pop-up? I know we talked about it and mentioned it last year, but I think that's a wonderful idea, and I think the community and the board would like to hear how the progress is going with that. And piggybacking on that is, last year, we talked about Independence and its accreditation, and how awesome and outstanding that was. And I was wondering if the board could be provided any further updates? I know we were doing research to see if there were any schools like Independence in the East Coast or countrywide, that we can have some further bragging rights on how awesome an Independence non-traditional school is. I'd be very interested to hear that. And I don't know if, along the lines of SATs and PSATs, I know that we do a great job of keeping that in the budget, so all students can participate and take those tests. I'm wondering if all of our high school students have the ability to take the PSATs in school? I know a few high schools take time out during the beginning of the year, and all the students take PSATs. I know from my experience that that is one of, if you learn how to take the test, you'll be very successful at taking the real test when it's time. So, I'm not sure if we do that all, division-wide, we do. That's wonderful to hear. That was a question that was raised by one of my parents. So, thank you, and I'm sorry to take an extended time, but thank you for allowing it.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. My apology for not putting the joint committee report on as a standing, standing agenda item, and we'll correct that moving forward. Ms. Jesse?
Thank you very much. Of course, it's back-to-school nights, so there was, the problem with back-to-school nights is that there, sometimes we have three in one night. So, I don't know how we can work that schedule out, but in many instances, I was there, and maybe it was announced that I was there. But I was able to attend Aquaquan and Tidham, Rockledge, Jenkins, Springwood, Lake Ridge, Old Bridge, and West Ridge, and Woodbridge High. I want to thank facilities for all that is done for the Aquaquan District, because Aquaquan Elementary is ecstatic about getting a new school down the road. And Tidham and Springwood and Lake Ridge have beautiful, beautiful additions. Jenkins, of course, has a brand-new school, and I was able to attend their Title I program there. West Ridge and Lake Ridge, I know you guys know Stace and Stacy Ridgeway, and they've done a lot of our murals, but they did a mural in residency, and I saw that on the web. It was wonderful. And I walked into Lake Ridge, and there was this lion on the front of the building, and it was bright. And I didn't know, but I said, "Stace and Stacy Ridgeway are here." And they had everything set up in that building, and it was a wonderful, wonderful activity. I also, I'm on the VSBA Challenging Schools and School Equity Committee, and I am pleased to hear that superintendent is going to look at SAT performance, because one of the things that concerns me is a disparity between our graduation rate statewide, which is also 92%, and the fact that only 54% of our kids are meeting those college benchmarks. And when you start looking at the equity issue, it's half that amount for minority students. And I know that Prince William has done a better job, but really, only a third of our minority students in many instances are meeting those benchmarks. So, as you, I really would like to see you develop a program that addresses that. I was also very pleased to hear that we are 100% accredited. I'm hoping I can understand this accreditation process, because 92% of the schools in the state of Virginia, 92 are all accredited. And I'm not sure I quite understand that on the Challenging Committee, Challenging Schools Committee. I think we're going to be looking into that, but I am very concerned that when we put these big explanations and we showcase that we're so, we're 90, there are all of this accreditation, and, but 92% of the schools in the state of Virginia reach that same goal. I wonder if somehow it kind of, I don't know, we're not misleading the public, but I think... I wonder if somehow it kind of, I don't know, we're not misleading the public, but I think that we need to be really careful about that. So, I would ask the Superintendent to look at that. Thank you.
Mr. Trentum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to say thank you, Mr. Deutsch, for your acknowledgement of the outstanding win that Patriot had last Friday. So, and if you weren't sure which team won, you just check out the clothing attire.
Hashtag blow up.
Thank you. But the only thing, see, we're actually getting out early, so I don't want to stand too much, I don't want to keep us too long, but I do want to say that our Ombudsman's office is up and running. She's got offices, she's got furniture, sort of, but we're working on that as well, and it's all great. But anyway, so, we approved a revision to the policy to not consent agenda. We had a, we had a presentation at the last board meeting. Ms. Espinoza did a great job, and so I just want to encourage all of our, our staff and our, our community members that have questions and things like that, please seek out Ms. Espinoza, keep her very busy and occupied so she doesn't get bored. Thank you very much.
Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I have referred several people to Ms. Espinoza, so I wondered at first, when we were getting ready to do this position with the Ombudsman, if we'd be able to keep you busy enough, but I'm finding myself referring one or two people to you a week right now, so we will definitely be keeping you busy. Thank you so much for coming to work with us in Prince William County Schools. So, it's been a very busy time. As I've mentioned in the last couple of board meetings, we've had lots of back-to-school nights. I've had the pleasure of attending back-to-school nights at Benton Middle School, Coles Elementary School, Gravely Elementary School, Ashland Elementary School, Westridge, and then at Springwoods, I got to check out the new wing. That was so much fun. Ms. Jessie, that is gorgeous. It is absolutely gorgeous. Also, this week, I was able to go and read to students for the Henderson Elementary School Read-A-Thon, and I know Mr. Wilk was there as well. That was a lot of fun to read to the kids. I want to point out that Sinclair Elementary School will have a Cafe Rio Spirit Day on October 16th. That's the date of our next school board meeting. So, since we usually make these announcements really late, I wanted to let everybody know in the Manassas community, please go out to Cafe Rio and support Sinclair Elementary School on that Spirit Day. That business has been a huge supporter for our schools, and their food is really good. And we have the Western High School, the Western High School Parents Summit is coming up on October 19th. There'll be another one, I wouldn't say it's in March, but the High School Summit's coming up October 19th. There was a date change from originally. The registration closes on October 14th, so parents of high schoolers, I believe rising eighth graders are also, eighth-grade parents are also involved in that. Please, please, please sign up to attend that summit. Amazing sessions, lots of great information for parents. I am really glad that we have that available now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. It's been a crazy past 14 days since our last school board meeting. The following day after our school board meeting, I had the pleasure of visiting, daytime visits to Henderson Elementary and Montclair Elementary Schools. That evening, I attended Mary Williams Back-to-School Family Fun Night. That was a great event. The following Friday, I went to Teal Out Night at Forest Park High School. I got to walk around and be the personal photographer for the goat as he was swarmed by students and Bruins throughout. My favorite moment was riding the golf cart with him and my son, and he stood up and rode on the back, and it was like the Pope Mobile, so. Swarming fans that Saturday. Attended Potomac, Potomac High School Community Day. That was a great event, an annual event Potomac High School does. The following week, we've, as we've all alluded to, was back-to-school nights for elementary nights. This was a crazy week. I did, starting on Monday, go to Ashland Elementary, not only as a board member, but as a parent for my son as well. The following Tuesday, doubleheader, did a Covington-Harper Triangle. Wednesday was Dumfries Elementary, and then Thursday rounded out with the doubleheader at Montclair and Mary Williams. The Friday after that, I did go and visit schools at Swan's Creek, Potomac Middle School, and then, as Ms. Satterwhite said, this past Monday, Henderson PTCO hosted a Million Dreams Read-A-Thon at the Montclair Library, and that was a great event. Thank you. Have a good night.
Outstanding. Thank you all. Very, you know, thrilled by the work that the school division has done historically on sustainability stuff. It's not stuff, sustainability issues. Brian Gorman, Al Chiroki, Dr. Walts' staff has sustainability plan that they've implemented, light bulbs, things like that, have directly resulted in significant savings for the school division. I, as, as one of the board members, is very interested in solar energy, net zero, electric vehicles for the busing. The governor, Dominion Energy, have rolled out some pilot programs that I know our folks are looking at. I'm excited to hear where we can go with those. I think, you know, I'm on the Board of Visitors at UVA, and we issued a $350 million centry bond. One of the companies that bought 50 million of the bond was a United Kingdom Company, who bought it because they were impressed with our sustainability programs at UVA. Sustainability is starting to sell, is starting to catch the eye of folks on Wall Street, is starting to catch the eye of folks at rating agencies. Divisions, school divisions, large enterprises, county governments that start investing in sustainability are catching the eye of Wall Street. I believe we are at a tipping point, and in another few years, it will become economically, extremely economically viable to be in that game. And so, I look forward to continued innovation, creativity, and a commitment, Dr. Walts, with the work that you guys have already done moving forward. So, thank you for that. Regarding student success, I am thrilled to always hear from the Superintendent, to see our newsletter scoop, if you don't read it, about the great things that are happening here in Prince William County and our success. As you heard from Ms. Jessie, we do have above-average SAT scores in certain areas. We have areas that we have work to do. I believe the school division, its employees, its principals, its teachers, its staff have been committed for a long time to getting these numbers up, and I think that as we continue to work hard, there are more things we can do, which is something that the school division has always done. I've watched the school division and been a part of it. My son is a junior in the school division, and I have three other kids in the school division, so I continue to be impressed with the constant improvement and continued improvement. And it's not just lip service from the Superintendent, it's a real thing that's happening on a daily basis. So, I want to thank the staff, Dr. Walts, the school board for your continued leadership in trying to make Prince William County Schools really world-class. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening and a great night. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.